I'd like to call and order the Buckingham County Plan and Commission Meeting for September 22nd. Please stand as Commissioner Doria will lead us in our invitation and Commissioner Booze in a pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Father, we just thank you for this beautiful day. We thank you for our blessings, Lord. We ask you to be with us tonight at the Plan and Commission Meeting, be with each member here and whoever's participating just tonight. We ask that you would bless us and keep us and give us safe passage home. We ask in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Thank you, Commissioners. This brings us to establishment of form. We have six of eight, so we do have a form. Think is any changes to the agenda?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Seeing none, do have a motion approved as presented?
So moved.
Second. Alright.
Yeah, how do we get to vote here?
It's a common. I hope.
Oh, there we go.
Alright.
Alright. Yeah, okay. Motion made.
There we go. Right again. There we have five. That passed a six with two absences. Alright, that brings us to approval of minutes. We have one set of minutes. That's August 25th, regular meeting. Does anyone have any changes to the minutes? Seeing none, do have a motion approved as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote. Alright, that passes. Nikki, it brings us to our public comment period. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
We do not, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, I'll close that and move forward to our old business, which is SUP for Mr. Herndon.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The public hearing this evening is for case 25 SUP 360. Our applicant is Hunter Herndon. The property on which the request is being made is Tax Map 16, parcel 37, containing just over 57 acres, and it's located along a to-be-debuted South Constitution Route, Scottsville, Virginia, address in the Slate River District. The request is to obtain a special use permit to operate campgrounds for 14 to 20 RV sites. This information was presented to you last month with a request in regards to a right-of-way by the applicant. I do believe that the applicants are in the audience this evening to address any questions or concerns the commission may have.
Okay, thank you, Nikki. Before I open up the public hearing, do any of the Commissioners have any questions that Dips want for the applicant?
Mine would only be that I knew we talked to the applicant last month
Right.
about getting access to that property. There wasn't any official approval by any of the neighbors. I'm wondering if that has...
Right. Mr. Herndon, would you come on forward and answer the question, sir? Place your full name.
Yes, good evening. I'm Alan Troy Herndon. I'm a homeless daddy and an interest owner in the property as well. And I haven't been able to, so make sure I got a right-of-way through that. I've talked to Ali twice on the phone. I give everybody a pamphlet, kind of what we wanted to do. If you go to that back page on there, if you look on there, I've highlighted you a road. It basically is in pink writing. I don't know if Mr. Nikki's got one or not. Do you have one, Nikki?
Yes, I got you.
I checked this part, you know, coming from my property at the end when you leave Route 20 there. I had Mr. Doria, we rode up there and took a look around, and I checked it that road because, you know, that part of the road still has original road banks from God knows when, you know, that goes all the way to Rock Island Road, like I told y'all. We've had the property for almost 20 years. We've been using that as a right-of-way to get in there to that property as well and bulldozed it a year before last, two years ago, put road ditches in. Ali didn't have any problem with that. When we done it then, I put about four loads of stone up next to 20, so you could see on elevation-wise. Mr. Doria wanted to see if you could see right there, but of course, we've got some trees in the way. But like I said, I checked it all the way from there. That thing that you're looking at there was approved by the county in 2007, is what Nikki has informed me in a prior meeting at her office, and it, you know, basically states that Ali could do that, you know, with y'all's blessing, and I think it was approved, but another has been come to fruition. And at the end of the day, you know, I've spoke to Ali twice about it, and I told him on the phone the other day, you know, I was prepared to put that first part of that road in, which is checked in pink to state specifications all the way to the rock, you know, for less than pavement. You know, that's one of the bigger expenses in doing something like this. And, you know, he said that he thought we could work out something, but I haven't been able to get him down to the property. He lives in Zion's Crossroads now, and Ali's getting a little older. I think some other people have spoke to Ali, and like I said, I feel certain that we can work out something with Ali, you know, to get a legal right-of-way into the property. I would hate to think it would come to anything where we couldn't work something out, you know?
Can I ask this question?
Yes, go ahead.
Without a specific right-of-way, without that already available, I mean, if we turn this over to the board with a recommendation, is that allowable when there's really a landlocked situation at this point in time? Edmondson?
Well, your comments from VDOT are indicating that the roadway that is there, I'm trying to get to that now, is not sufficient for the VDOT standards, and they're asking for more of an agreement because there needs to be cleaning on the property that belongs to Mr. Tajali now before they can sign off on a VDOT land disturbance permit.
Well, Mr. Chairman, then we've...
Yes, sir.
We've already been criticized once by the board, saying that we sent something over there on a premature basis. I'm having a little bit of a problem. If this isn't formally approved and VDOT doesn't seem to feel comfortable, then why would we turn this over to anybody before he has that particular approval?
Right, well, as I stated in the introduction, you know, we established that operating policy that we have, we can hold this up if we don't have sufficient right-of-way cleared by the public. So what we can do is go ahead and do the public hearing, listen to the comments, and then answer questions, and that decision would be based on what this commission wants to do. We have the opportunity to table it till that entrance is corrected or achieved, I guess is a better way. Or we can move it forward. It depends on what the commission wants to do.
Alright, thank you.
Yes, sir. Any former, while Mr. Herndon up, is any other questions for him at this point?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, Steve.
I'd like to ask, what was the problem with VDOT?
That's my question.
I can read you the state, the application for traffic impact determination as completed by Brian Locker, the Assistant Resident Engineer for VDOT. So he states that the traffic impact statement is not required. The traffic generated by the proposed zoning change development does not exceed normal thresholds. That is a check mark on the application form. Next question is, does the existing entrance meet VDOT requirements for the proposed used? Yes or no? The answer is no. If no, please explain. He provides in his narrative, the subject parcel does not have road frontage for direct access to Route 20. Access to the site is through an existing entrance fronting Route 20 and roadway through parcel 16-8-1. The existing condition of the current access is not in compliance with VDOT standards for an RV park entrance with an anticipated build-out of 15 to 20 sites, per the applicant. The applicant also acknowledged that they are coordinating with the landowner of parcel 16-8-1 to acquire an easement for legal access. Entrance improvements and confirmation for use of the easement will be required by VDOT prior to the start of business. A land use permit is required prior to construction of improvements. Contact the Farmville residency and he gives us information for permit issuance. The extent of improvements will be evaluated at the time of permit issuance. Again, Brian Locker, Assistant Resident Engineer for VDOT for residency.
That gave you the information. Need to see?
Well, I looked at the site with Mr. Herndon, and he, you know, he knows he needs to take some trees down and clear that entrance way out, but once you look at it, it looks pretty clear both ways if he does what he's going to do. But I don't know if VDOT needs to pass this before we can make an assessment.
But that parcel where the easement is doesn't belong to the applicant.
So we need to do that.
Right, that's the issue. If Mr. Herndon owned it at the road, it wouldn't be an issue.
I got you, okay.
Alright, any other questions for the applicant at this time? Mr. Herndon, you can go ahead and sit down, sir. I'll do the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Herndon.
Alright, I'll now open up the public hearing.
Yes, sir. We do have one individual signed up. It's Brandon Parker.
Okay. Mr. Parker, would you come forward, sir? Can you just state your full name, address? You've got three minutes, sir.
My name's Brandon Ralph Parker. Before I begin, I'd like to provide some handouts to the commission, if that's okay?
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Plan and Commissioning. My name's Brandon R. Parker, 1330南South Constitution Route in Scottsville, directly adjacent to the proposed RV park on Tax Map 16-37. My wife and I moved to Scottsville in 2016 to start our family in a peaceful country setting, much like I grew up in Alabama. We now enjoy our rural Buckingham County life with our two young and rowdy children. I urge this commission, as advocates for the citizens of Buckingham County, to deny or at minimum further investigate this special use permit application as the project poses serious risks to our community. The following points should be seriously considered prior to moving forward. Water and environmental risks. My property contains a pond that drains directly into Little Georgia Creek, which flows to the James River and Chesapeake Bay. Any septic failure or runoff from this RV park will contaminate my pond and then the creek, creating both a personal and regional environmental hazard. Exhibit C contains photos. Property values. Research shows intensive and poorly maintained uses like RV parks threaten the stability and value of surrounding homes. This project risks turning a rural, family-oriented area into a long-term workforce housing site, which would diminish neighbor investments and quality of life, as stated in the application. Zoning purpose. The A1 agricultural district is intended to preserve farmland, forests, watersheds, and healthy residential surroundings. An intensive RV park geared toward long-term workers rather than short-term recreation directly conflicts with this purpose. Procedural deficiency. The zoning ordinance requires public notice signs at the nearest VDOT right-of-way. No such sign was ever posted, which deprived neighbors of proper notice. Finally, the applicant claims this project will benefit Buckingham County. In reality, it is a private, for-profit venture. The burdens environmental, financial, and community will fall on neighbors and taxpayers while the profits go only to the applicant. For these reasons, I respectfully request that you recommend denying the special use permit. Although, as a U.S. Navy veteran, I understand how important communication is prior to moving forward with this type of decision, and therefore, I strongly request at a minimum, this commission postpone deliberation of this special use permit until all parties have appropriate time to gather necessary facts and understanding regarding this matter and what is most beneficial for our community in Buckingham County. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Look at the information. Yeah, anyone else?
No, sir.
I say one more, okay. Alright, I'll now close the public hearing and move us back to the Commissioners. Does any other Commissioners have any questions for the applicant?
Chairman?
Yes, sir, go, Pete.
For the applicant, I did not see the property, but is it extremely hilly or is it flat? It's pretty flat, isn't it? Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Herndon. Yes, sir, come up. You're welcome back forward.
I'm a contractor and I work with VDOT all the time, but, you know, it looks like to me a sensible thing to think about would be, you know, something to think about would be, this was approved in 2007. I don't understand why this right-of-way, if it was put in the way that the back piece of paper you got showed right there, when you blow up this diagram says Route 20, you got, you know, the 30-foot radius curves coming in off of 20. You know, if this was approved then and they staked to that, Harold Freeman and Bird, they staked this thing against Ali back in 2005, and this thing was approved in 2007. If this was okay to enter Route 20 then, why isn't it okay to enter Route 20 where it is now? That's what I don't quite understand. That's my only question.
Right.
And I got Dickinson survey, Michael Goman's going to be doing, you know, what I want to do with Ali, to show him the center of this road, but I want to find these pins because that's my only question, really, I got. And I didn't do my homework on that. They're saying that it has to go across Central Virginia Electric Co-op property, because that's who adjacent to that property there.
Right. Well, I can give you, this commission can't really answer that
Yeah, I'm just saying, I'm asking the question. It's a legitimate question. I think that's a legitimate question.
But you've got to remember too, 2017 to 2018 years of trafficking.
And I've been going in it longer than that, so, you know, that's what I'm saying. I built the road up just so you could see coming up that bank. All that's crushing runs, VDOT A1, A1 stone there, you know, and I don't understand. If this was approved in route 20 then, why can't you enter Route 20 the same way with this thing?
I wish I could answer for you. I can't. I know there's...
I'll do some more homework.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Now, we've discussed, as Pete brought up, you know, our policy we established is you have an option of tabling because he doesn't have the right-of-way completed yet, or at least no paperwork on it at all with the landowner. Or we can, you have the opportunity, you can move it forward or even want to turn it down. So I guess I'm putting that out there for you. Gavin, you've got something?
I would, again, I missed last month, but I would say this needs to get straightened out before we can move forward. If the applicant says he's working with the property owner to get it straightened out, but I really think this should be taken care of before we move this thing forward.
So your suggestion is just to table it until he gets that, achieves that permission? Is that what's my understanding? Okay, alright. Any discussion on Pete?
Yeah, I'm absolutely, I agree, but there seems to be there, there are two situations, it seems to me, that have come forward. One is, obviously, we need to know whether or not you've got permission to get onto the property. But what you brought up was that there is an easement. Apparently, that's not clear. So maybe by tabling this, if we can address both issues and have you come back and tell us exactly how you can get into that property, and if there is an established right-of-way, you'll have to check with the county and bring that back to us. That might answer a lot of questions. But I'm also in agreement that this thing should really be tabled until we at least have this situation answered.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, Steve.
I agree with both of you, because if we do send it to the Board of Supervisors, they're going to send it back to us.
Right, that's a possibility.
That's the only problem I have, and, I mean, it could go through, but we've had it happen before, and I think that Mr. Herndon would be glad to investigate some and find out what he needs to do, if that's good with him, and maybe we could table it.
Okay, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Herndon, you may want to get with your neighbor and find out if there's some way to resolve your issues as well.
Alright, we've had some suggestions. It seems like it's a pretty good consensus with the board. Do we want to put, one of you want to put that in the form of a motion?
I'll make a motion that we table this until he can get this right-of-way squared away, and...
I'll second that.
Have a motion in a second?
Second.
Yes, go ahead, Pete.
Now I got to figure out how to get back to my motion and second here. Did I do it? No, I didn't. How do I do this?
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion on it? Yeah.
Oh, there it is, okay.
Okay. Alright, we'll vote then.
Thank you.
Alright.
Now you got to open it all. I'm just keeping it there.
Mr. Herndon, we voted to table that. You can hopefully achieve your entrance permit. In the meantime, like I said, probably talk to your neighbor, but also reach out to the Highway Department, see if you can get some answers from them, sir. Alright, that moves us to a...
He asked when the next meeting would be.
When could he know the next meeting?
Well, it's a month, so if you can get this access problem resolved, you have to let Nikki know. And if it's early enough in the month that we can get the advertisement, it'll come in a month. If it's, you know, not, then it'll be the following month. You'll have to come back. It'll have to be another public hearing, sir. Thank you. Alright, Nikki, that brings us to our new business introduction of the SUP.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Plan and Commission, the next case is the introduction of 25 SUP 361. Your applicants are Jay Corey and Kathleen A. Shalene. The property on which the request is being made is Tax Map 38, parcel 7, lot 2, contains 27.33 acres approximately. It is located in District 6. The zoning district is A1, and their request is to obtain a special use permit to operate a campground. The applicant is asking the Plan and Commission to hold a public hearing for this request. And as indicated in Condition Number 7, the campground be limited to a maximum number of campsites, as indicated in the narrative. At each of your stations, you'll see a packet of information in which Mr. and Ms. Shalene updated their narrative a bit along with updating their site plan to best reflect the proposed use within their request. The applicants are here this evening to address any questions or concerns that you may have. But once again, the request is for a public hearing. Your next monthly meeting is October 27th at 6:00 p.m. if you'd wish to hold a public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Well, Shalene, would you please come forward, sir? Give us just a quick overview of what you want to do and answer some questions for us, sir.
Good evening. It's a very simple request. We cleared out some land. We want to build a house there. We want to be able to park our RV on the property while we build our house. That's in a nutshell what this is all about. We are not residents of Virginia yet. We're trying to establish residency. That'll happen once we can get on the property, get our footers, I guess, inspected. That'll allow us to then apply for an address, which will allow us to then become residents of Buckingham County. We do have full septic in place. We have power in place. We have a well in place that has been tested for potable water. We have all the infrastructure in place that I could go drive my RV out there tomorrow and hook it up, given permission. I'm not one that's trying to circumvent the system. You know, that's why my RV is not there. Currently living in an approved campground while we're trying to make this happen.
Okay.
Very simple, straightforward thing, I would think.
Alright, questions from the...
Chairman, let me ask a couple of questions. I took a ride down that area. There was somebody clearing, there was a road, looks like a brand-new road.
The dirt road, yes, sir.
Is that yours?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let me, Ms. Edmondson, let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
He actually wants to put essentially someplace to live on a piece of property that belongs to him. The only thing that would make this a campground is he's asking for two sites. Is that right? Or could he just park his RV there if it was only him?
No, sir. No, he cannot. The legal determination is that there is no usage for a temporary camper at all within any of our zoning districts.
So it would have to be a regular mobile home if he wanted to make it a home?
It would have to be the definition of a single-family dwelling in this particular zoning district, yes, sir.
I could put a yurt there, but I can't put an RV there.
So the big question is, you want two campsites, because you want a relative to it?
No, the only reason I'm asking for two campsites is because the state's definition of a campground is three sites. So if I keep it under that, then there are certain regulations that the state imposes that I don't have to comply to, and I figure if I'm going to have to go through this process, then I've been 50,000 miles with my RV across this great country of ours, and I have a lot of friends that have RVs. I have family up in Pennsylvania that have RVs, so if they come down to help me with harvest or whatever, ultimately, my goal is I want to build a little farm in this area.
Okay, so you indicated a couple of things that you want to get done. One was meat processing. If I'm not mistaken, you understand that meat processing falls under an entirely different zone condition, right?
Okay, I would look into that.
Alright.
Some of these were ideas that I hadn't had a chance to look into yet.
Well, the rest of it is farming. I don't have any problem with that, but meat processing...
I can find a butcher.
Yeah, essentially.
Easy enough.
So, given the fact that it's in his description, does that have to be removed?
Yes, if he's not going to obtain any other special use permits for any other activities, and it's only going to be for farm, campground, but meat processing does require an SUP. But there is a meat processing plant very close to him.
Cool.
I understand. We need to have that removed then.
Can we strike through it now or do I need to resend it to you?
This will all be part of the permanent file, so record, so if you want to strike through that now and make that...
Let's just strike it now, and I'm 100% okay with that.
Good for me, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Other questions?
Yeah, I was looking, well, these two projects have changed a little bit. The one I had earlier, it shows where you had a house you were going to build, and then your septic tank and drain field are all there together. And then on the other side of it, where it's going to be like a workstation place to sleep, but you had a workhouse there.
So two things we wanted to build on this property that we planned from the get-go, and that was to build a three-bedroom house with a three-car garage. That's our dream house. Because this process has now taken us almost a year, and by the time we get out to the property, will be about a year, if everything goes smoothly with no more delays, we have to pivot our thoughts. So I just got the plans finished up for the ADU, the smaller of the two unit, which is a one-bedroom granny flat, if you will. So what we're going to do in order to be able to get on the property is we're going to park the RV. What we want to do, and the reason the location's changed, is so that we can move the RV over to where we were going to build our main house, instead of where we were going to build the granny flat, the ADU.
Yeah, that's what I'm seeing here now. On the houses is two RVs.
Say that again?
On this one?
Yes.
Your two RVs is right where the house is going to be.
So if you see where the other box is, just to the right of that, that's where the... Let me get a copy of that drawing.
I mean, the two RVs on the other side, yeah.
So where the other box is, where the, I got some pictures here that might make it easier. I don't know if I can show those to you. I'm looking to see if I have a copy of the picture that you're looking at. Okay, so you can see where the driveway comes around on this side, and there's a little white box. That white box is where we're going to switch gears and build our other unit. And then we're going to park the RV where the original house was going to be, because we're switching from building our three-bedroom house to building the one-bedroom because of finances and the delays and all of that.
Alright, so you're not going to build the big one over here?
We're going to table that for later. Our septic system is in there. We have 2,000-gallon septic tanks, one for the ultimate ADU, one for the house that both share a four-bedroom... one for the house that both share a four-bedroom drainage field. So this was all approved through the Department of Health. So all we're doing is instead of hooking the RV up to the one tank that is destined for the ADU, we're going to hook it up to the septic tank that's designed for the three-bedroom house. And we're going to just build the ADU before we build the other house. That gives us a chance to move into the smaller house quicker and out of the RV quicker.
And then maybe years down the road, you come back and rebuild the three?
Yes, sir, that's the plan. And so we figure, we're hoping that next, throughout the course of next year, we can finish building the smaller house, because I'm building it myself. And then once we get that done, possibly the following year, start building the bigger one. The big thing is there's a lot of concrete in a three-bedroom or in a three-car garage. And that's one thing I don't do.
Any other questions with commissioners? I did have one. Reading Lockner's suggesting to you that the VDOT suggests establishing of a formal agreement between the possessor owners acknowledging shared use and maintenance of the access. I think that's Mr. Burgess. Is it not property that you have to cross to get into his, into yours?
Jeannie and Leonard, I don't know their last name off the top of my head.
Anyway.
They're very nice people. They don't have any problem with it. I do own 17 feet of road frontage in that area, that I can use that. My discussions with them were, why make that 17 feet wider? Why not just use, because if you look at the angle.
It's a, what you're doing now, what you plan to is use existing entrance that's there.
To cross over about 15 feet of their property.
Yeah, and that's, I guess that's why he's making that acknowledgement. If, you probably want to look into that.
Yeah, if I can just figure out what verbiage needs to be on something, I can have something.
As long as he doesn't have a problem with it. There is another solution, and I'll make a suggestion to you. You've got your trail on here. I know it's an extensive, a little bit more road work, but that would put the entrance completely on you, open up the trail and you never have to worry about talking to another landowner in the future, now we're in the future.
Yeah, that's, unfortunately, there's some hills and valleys between there that would make it a little bit difficult to get through. I mean, obviously, I could build a land bridge for what I needed, but then you're talking, I'm already looking at about an 800-foot driveway to get back to the building site.
It would probably double it inside.
Yeah, now we're talking at least double that. So that's why we opted to come in that side. Because if you notice the green line on that was a trail that went all the way around from one side to the other.
I understand the logistics of why. Sometimes in the future, you might wish that you had done that. But anyway, that's your decision.
And if it comes down to that, I'd just move it over to the 17 feet that I own.
But if you would, this would, if we were to move forward to public hearing, it would be nice to have some kind of documentation that you can use, you can cross the property at the existing.
If a very simple, informal write-up can be, it would suffice, would suffice that requirement? Then I can do that. We can have it both signed and notarized if that's a requirement, no problem.
Yeah, I think it would be very advantageous to have it for us.
We've talked with that neighbor quite a few times. They're actually keeping an eye on things while we're not there.
Very good. That's all I had.
I can get that done before the hearing.
Very good. Any other questions from the commissioners? You may sit down, sir. What's the pleasure of the mission?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to move this forward to a public hearing. With, with the condition that they take meat processing out of this application.
Understand, okay.
My computer needs working on. It's some change, all right.
I have a motion, do I have a second while we're getting Danny's?
One second. All right.
Hold tight till. Well, any further discussion before we vote? Oh, just removing your processing, because that, that's going to trigger another whole permit. You don't want that.
Thank you.
Do I need to make the motion here again?
Probably, there it goes. And Steve, it's seconded. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll vote. All right, that passes and we will see you next month, sir.
Thank you.
All right, Nikki brings your building reports, building permits, excuse me, and your report.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything further.
All right. Commissioners, any commissioners have any matters of concern they would like to discuss at this time?
Just a question, will we have a work session next month or is there any need for it at all?
I've been tasked for anything. The chairman hasn't reached out to me, so is there something that you'd like to?
I don't think so at this time. It may be something which will correlate with this last application. You asked about the way Nikki can explain it better than I. But anyway, regards to A1 and a house and not being able to live on, in a camper, it's some, the staff has been working on trying to come up with an, I guess, an alternative or a caveat, more likely, best way to describe it.
Essentially, whatever's presented in the direction from the board at that point, within the next few months, something could come back to the planning commission that all would need to heavily discuss and. As is at that time. So hang tight. I'm sure we're going to have some more questions.
We'll let you know.
Is this what stemmed from the last board of supervisors meeting where the gentleman had the RV and he was trying to build his home?
Yes, that's, that's.
It would be you. Oh, okay. Because I saw that and I wondered.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hey now, that's being addressed. So possibly in the future, maybe a work session for that, I would say. But for right now, no. And I did had suggested having discussion on the special use permit, the conditional. But, and I think we'll table that. We don't have two of the commissioners here, plus we've got this that Mr. Wright is being working on. So we'll table that until we get this under control and then we'll maybe address that again.
Remind me what that was about?
That was some other, the counties in the state have condition, conditional special use permits.
Oh, yeah, okay, we talked about that.
And, yeah, I just read up on it, but I think because of the situation we're trying to resolve with the A1 district there, we'll just table this for now. We don't have two, like I said, two of the commissioners aren't here. I'd like to have everybody's input on it before we, you know, proceed or whatever, have a discussion on it, so. All right, if we have nothing else, I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I don't guess there's any discussion, so we'll vote.
Yeah, I did.
Here we have a scoop as a second.
Yeah, a second.
Oh, man, all right. All right, take your votes. And we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.